Get a free ticket, parking for our T-shirt, and a pork voucher.
July 27, regular Board of Supervisors session?
All right, very good. Let's go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Randi.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good. Entertained a motion on this morning's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to move item number six to item number one on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda, making item number six new item number one.
I'll second.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Agenda is approved as amended. Any communications received? Jake?
Nothing that I worry about.
Steve, Keisha?
I received phone calls asking if we were now having public meetings, open public meetings, as opposed to just Zoom, and I told them, yes, we were.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Public comments is the portion of our meeting that public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. So are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Or anything on my? And nothing from here. All right, very good. We'll move on. Would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Motion we approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Aye.
On a business, so for the folks here in the room, new protocol for all speakers, please go to the podium to speak. That's where our audio will be recorded. Very good. With that, new item number one, it's receive and file Marion County Sheriff's FY 21 Quarterly Fiscal Year Reports. Mr. Sample.
Jenny will take care of that for us.
All right.
She does the fabulous job.
Jenny?
Okay, so you guys have copies of my quarterly reports and then the fiscal year for 2020, 2021, just saving all the money that you receive and send out compared to the fiscal year before for about $2,000 less than what we brought in. So you're doing pretty good. Considering paper service has been a lot slower, sheriff's sales, we haven't done quite as near as many as those just with the COVID. So a lot of the money's been taken in for like paper service and stuff like that. There to be part of that has not been missing this last year. We still have like inmate housing, pretty much the same, room and board, pretty much everything is about the same thing except the paper service.
So Jenny, from your estimation, where you're at in the course of the year relative to budget, you don't see anything unusual right now?
No.
From expenditures or something coming up in terms of expenses or anything like that?
Not through the civil office side, no. I mean, we just take in like a lot of paper service, sheriff's sales and stuff like that.
Whatever that volume is, if that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Do you want me to stand up?
Sheriff, absolutely. Please.
So what these quarterly reports are, we're required by code every year to come before you go through them. Like you said, Jenny does a fabulous job with her budget upfront on different things. You asked about expenses on that side of it. We don't see any real big capitals that we need to do at this point, the maintenance side of it. The maintenance guys have done a great job along those. So room and board was mentioned there. Where actually our numbers are up a little bit in regards to now because Warren County has been bringing us quite a bit more. Thank you, Warren County, for doing that. They're a guaranteed payee, I mean, on that room and board side of it. So that's been a good relationship there. But otherwise, just business as usual.
Very good. Thank you. Questions before, Steve, Keisha, any questions?
The contracts that we have with some of the cities, those are all still the same.
Yeah, there is discussion. Melterdale, obviously, now has lost their police chief. I don't know where that's going to go down the road. The mayor hasn't reached out, I mean, to me yet in regards to that, but that may be a future discussion along those lines. But I see no need to increase any of those at this point. I mean, it's been going well, so I think you'd probably ask about us.
Yep, no, just looking at them, yep, yep.
Yeah.
If it's from Warren County, are they building a new jail?
They are. So that is something that we're going to probably, I mean, we're looking at it down the road. We probably have another year, I mean, on that, and then we're going to, I mean, they'll have their own. So our numbers will decrease at that point. I'm guessing it's probably about half and half right now. If you have 40 people in jails, probably 20 and 20. I mean, so down the road, that loss of revenue will be something to look at.
What do you, how do you think this new law on the carry permanence, Jason, I think that's going to affect our bottom line as far as on the shallow issue permits?
So we've had a lot of people call our office about that and different things. A lot of the people are still renewing them. I mean, for the price it is, I mean, for the reciprocity with other states, the ease of going to purchase, a lot of them are still renewing it. So we thought we'd probably see a decrease in it, but I mean, so far, it's been, I mean, it's aimable. You know, there's certain times of the year when those renewals come up and on different times, but I have, we haven't seen a huge decrease in that.
Well, it's kind of, I'm kind of curious about that. You know, I renewed mine just exactly for the reasons you said, the reciprocity of the other states plus purchasing.
Yeah. It's one of those, the cost isn't, I mean, for the five-year permit type of deal, the cost isn't that extravagant where a lot of people are like, you know, I'd rather have it.
Depending on when you renew.
Yes, depending on when you renew. That is correct. But no, I don't think you're getting huge regards to that.
Okay.
No additional questions? Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to close discussion on this item or note the receive and file of the quarterly report?
Yep, make motion to receive and file.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Onto new item number two, appointments, city appellate development permission. Shelley Rigan, did I say that right? Am I pronouncing correctly? And Kristy Bender, is that right?
Bender.
Bender. Both term ending August 1, 2024, another term ending August 1, 2024.
Yeah, so city appellate reached out. They had made contact with both of these individuals that are currently serving on behalf of Marion County already. I don't know if any of them are online or not, both active in the community and willing to, interested in receiving. No information, hardly difference. So I believe Mandy's on it, but yeah. I don't think there's any issues.
Board, any questions? Any discussion? We just appreciate everybody being willing to serve on these commissions. That's always, to get volunteers, it's tough, so we do appreciate it.
This is a fairly active committee, so I mean, it is stepping up and it's not one that just doesn't meet at all or once a year.
Right.
It's fairly active, a different committee.
Steve, any questions?
No.
All right, very good. But entertain a motion on these appointments.
Motion we approve the appointments of Shelley Rigan, Kristy Bender.
Second. Jake?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Next, we have road department update and employee recognition. Tyler?
Trying to keep it short. Okay, so you know, quarterly, I typically give an update on the happenings of the road department, budget changes, projects, et cetera. So recently, Mike and I were talking during employee evaluations about, you know, the recognition that we do or don't give our employees. We have kind of what we call attaboys. Occasionally, the guys will do something extraordinary. We recognize them within our department. But other than that, we didn't have a lot, except for, you know, upon retirement, we recognize employees. So Mike and I kind of came up with the idea that we wanted to recognize the guys behind the scenes that really do the work and make our department what it is. And what first came to mind was our rock haulers. We have four of the six primary rock haulers with us today, one recently retired, Larry Rosenbaum, and then Dan's not here today, Dan Zickel. So from the last, we have John Johnson, Steve Andykamp, Rick Bruegge, and Brent Beller. And the reason I wanted to bring these guys in as our primary rock haulers is because in 2016, we started some major changes. Mike and Brian and I kind of sat down, went through our rock haul operations as a whole. And how do we get better quality rock to the roads more efficiently, more effectively, you know, save money, save time, et cetera. So that started four or five years ago, and in that timeframe, we've put a lot of pressure on these guys, specifically these four, but also Larry Rosenbaum, who recently retired, Rick McCarty, and Roy Allison were also involved, and we put a lot of pressure on them as well. Hope that's not why they left. So, you know, like I said, in 2016, we initiated the specification change. That was to get a comprehensive specification out there, so better rock quality, better gradation, and then how do we get that out there more effectively and more efficiently? And we relied on these guys a lot, you know. Mike and I went to them, and Mike is our road supervisor, I'm sitting in the front here, sorry. And so we went to them, you know, what could we do different? You know, what are the issues? You know, John specifically was kind of the lead. I was always asking him about wait times at the quarries and, you know, what do we do with our equipment? One of the first things we implemented was putting pusher axles on trucks. So we added an axle to the tractor trailer truck. And then now we're recently purchasing trailers with an additional axle, which actually reduced our turning radius, which was kind of a side benefit, but allowed us to haul more tonnage per round. And as a result of that, putting axles on the truck, we gained one round per day per truck. And with the third axle on the trailer, we're going to gain another round per day per truck. So that's pretty significant. And what that did was for all six rock haulers, that saves us about 11% in our rock hauling throughout the year. So, you know, over a 10% reduction in time, but also the fuel savings paid for all those improvements and equipment upgrades that we're making. So with that time, you know, we then asked these guys to do, you know, more than their essential functions in their job description by shouldering, which is something we've been lacking on. And Mike had these guys doing a lot of different types of shouldering operations, which is, you know, one thing that we've been lacking on. And we had an employee come in from another county, and he kind of gave us that outsider look, you know, that said, if we had to make an improvement, where would it be in shouldering? Shouldering our highways specifically. So these guys have been doing a lot of shouldering. You know, many of them have been involved with intersection reconstructions, improving site distance, improving safety in intersections. These are things we just take on ourselves, on our own, but having that extra two weeks in the spring, two weeks in the fall for them to take on jobs like that has proven very beneficial. Another thing that we relied on these guys for was the input on haul routes. How do we get the rock to the roads more quickly, you know, regardless of the equipment we're using? And we made a few changes early on on how we haul rock to what we call the Northwest Passage. So that's that area, clear out by Reynolds, north of the lake. There's not a great way to get there. I think for the most part, we were going up through Reynolds, taking Iowa 316. What we realized is if we haul out of Martin Marietta, we can get on 163. It's about the same distance, maybe a couple miles longer, but the turnaround was much quicker. And now in that area, you know, Brian and Mike running house was four me every once in a while, instead of averaging four loads a day up there, we're getting five without the equipment changes. So, you know, it's things like that, and we just ask them, and, you know, they don't always like what we do because nobody likes change. And sometimes I don't like the answers that I get, from them either, but, you know, we deal with it. And what I guess, what I want to say is I really appreciate the work these guys have put in, the input they've given us. When wait times get long at the quarry, you know, we now are stockpiling rock so we can switch over. Or, you know, there's times when rock gets short at the quarry, you know, there's a lot of construction going on, and we're not always the priority for the quarries, so sometimes they'll cut us off. We've implemented some things, and these guys have been a big part of creating and regrading our stockpiles to make it so we can get our semis in there, get them dumped. And what we haven't seen since we've made a lot of these changes is a bad year, a bad spring, really muddy roads, or any of that. And the work these guys have put in will really shine when we get to that point, when we have a bad year again, we'll be able to get the rock out there more quickly, either through use of the equipment or through the stockpiles. And so I guess, long story short, the results of better quality rock on roads more efficiently and in shorter amount of time. That proved beneficial to us as a department, but also us as a county, and ultimately benefiting the residents of Marion County. So I really appreciate their work. Not only do they haul rock and fill in regrading intersections and on the culvert crews and road regains and that sort of thing, but they all push now in the winter as well. So we're a little unusual, Marion County, because we have six primary rock haulers. We haul all our own rock. We don't contract any rock, but the driving factor there is the way our still renewable routes are set up. 2014, we reorganized our department. We actually went down from 16 to 15 truck routes and went from 14 to 10 or 11 motor grade routes. Steve was part of that. But ultimately, the number of operators, the number of mechanics that we need to maintain our equipment throughout the winter season drives the number of our employees, more so than what we do in the summer. So we, because we have that, the number of staff that we do to perform our winter operations, it gives us the option to haul all of our own rock, and I honestly believe that we can do it more efficiently. And our number do prove that in contract hauling. As we looked at all these changes, we were still considering contract hauling, and it didn't make sense for us, so.
Yeah, I truly do appreciate the work these guys do and all your, all the work all your crews do. I know from experience, and regardless of what some people's opinions are, I believe Marion County has one of the best road systems around.
Yeah, we get a lot of compliments from other, you know. See, it's you guys doing the work, and we appreciate that, you know, so.
You know, on a personal level, I'd like to thank Brent for helping me. He helped me fabricate the brackets for the TV stand for the elevator up at the courthouse. I appreciate that. Thank you, Brent.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
And who was the one for the grade on Low Drive? Was it one of these guys that did the pitch on it?
Most of these guys were probably involved with that project at some point.
Excellent work. I know that in the beginning, I have to travel on Low Drive, and I know it was a little soft at first, but it's tremendous. It is so, very thankful for what you guys do and your conscious effort and being able to get out there. And it makes a difference when you're traveling, you know, especially on a road that is heavily traveled, and that's a road that, you know, I, you know, people, several people cut through and go to Harvey too, so thank you for that.
Just on the public safety side of it too, without standing here, they, I just want to compliment them because I don't think a lot of people realize on the traffic safety side of it, I mean, those icy intersections, whether it be Mike or Tyler or the guys, I mean, that when we call and it's like, hey, we've just had three of them go into the ditch or something, they're very reactive to come out and help us with that. So the quicker they get out there and put sand or salt or different things down there, I mean, blade an intersection, the more accidents it prevents. So we're very thankful for that relationship too with the county.
Yeah, Marion County's road system, in my opinion, is second to none in all seasons, and it's all because of these guys.
Yeah. Thank Tyler, for you and the gentleman here, your whole team. Sometimes, you know, you only hear the negative because you make the positives so easy. You're so good at what you do. So people only highlight when something isn't the way that it normally is, or you got a washboard on the road or whatever, but it's all, just the comments I get are also minor by and large, and it's because you guys do such a great job. You make the difficult look really easy. And I think that's a compliment to all of you, and I know it's hard work, especially when it's as hot or it's 20 below zero. It's dangerous work. It's one of the most dangerous jobs we have. So really appreciate everything you guys do, and your team this time. Thank you.
So going back to kind of the administrative side of my update, just kind of want to give you a, a, a.
I have one more question.
Yep.
Do we have a water tank truck?
Yeah.
We do have?
If you, I don't know if you were on board yet, but I think you were. Ours broke down, our spray truck. It was, with grants, we could buy a new truck for what it was going to cost to fix the one we had. We've converted that spray truck to a water truck, and we're doing regrading of that.
You might, would you talk to Chris after the meeting? Because we might need that out the VA.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
So on the revenue side, we ended the last fiscal year 16.75% above the budgeted revenue, which is not at all what was predicted a year ago.
Seven. All that you're telling me is you don't need any more money?
What I'm telling you is we're going to put that money to good use on projects.
Ah, all right, all right.
Had to ask, didn't you?
So a little less than half of that was at CARES Act swap. So the DOT took CARES Act money, kept the federal money, gave us their share of the revenue tax, which took the federal requirements and administrative rules away for counties and cities. So that was beneficial. So, you know, that still leaves us with 98 or 9% additional above and beyond what I budgeted, and I budgeted a couple percent increase. That's not normal. That's more, typically, we see 4% to 5% above what I budget. And I budget based off revenue tax projections from the Iowa DOT and the County Engineers Association Committee that does those calculations. One reason is our vehicle miles traveled, and I think we've talked about this before, other counties' vehicle miles traveled are going down, ours are going up. That's largely due to our manufacturing, our tourism, and, uh, growing, right, and changing. So on the farming market side, we're 15% over budget, over the budgeted revenue, 8.7% of that was CARES Act stock as well. So about half of it. Projects, we just opened Pierce Drive, which is down by our place shop. That bridge was replaced, and the road is now open. There's some minor work to be finished there. 176th aisle purging is closed for bridge replacement. When the contractor is done there, they'll be going to another county, then returning to do 25th by Pleasantville, a bridge replacement there. And then ultimately, Kennedy Street, the bridge will be replaced out there, and the rim will be raised. We've been working for two years now with Corps of Engineers and actually 19 months to get off right away at Barrow, or off the courtyard, and I still don't have an agreement and I'm going to have to rebid the job. So that's always fun. We are going to raise the road there. That'll get us out of about 30% of flood events and about 60% of the duration.
What's the holdup on that one, Tyler? Is it just the court process?
Court process, real estate office in Rock Island. Ask Steve Edwards if you want more information. He's been down this road many times. So, yeah, I mean, the local office has been great. You know, the guys here at Red Rock have been great to deal with, and I've seen their emails to Rock Island trying to help that project along. Doesn't seem to make a difference, so. We will have to rebid the job because when I sent it out to the contractors, we had a deadline in there. We did not give them a notice to proceed by a certain date. We remitted, so that's the point we're at, still waiting on the Corps of Engineering. T-14 shoulder paving, this was a TSEP grant project. We're having a preconstruction meeting Thursday, so I don't know more on the schedule for that, but it'll be starting here in the next month probably. And then 40th overlay north of Pleasantville, that project has a late start date of September. Contractors telling us they'll start before the late start date, so we don't know anything there yet either, it's worse timing. Painting, there are supplies issues, supply issues. We bid the job back in February. This is for pavement markings on the highways. We bid the job before any major price increases. I know a lot of other counties saw price increases, and we saw that from some of the bidders in the job at that time as well. Our explanation, or their explanation is the ice storm in Texas knocked out manufacturing of a certain piece of the product that goes into the paint. So, and that's statewide. I think I would do, you can put out some publications about that as well, about their painting, getting short supply and short supply. As far as upcoming staffing changes, we will have one upcoming vacancy, and we do currently have two active-duty military deployments, one domestic and one foreign. So we head back to one of those with a full-time position, but then with Larry Rosenbaum's recent retirement, they took that position or that vacancy ultimately. So, you know, in the near future here, we will be down three employees, and you'll be getting a memo from me regarding how we're going to assess that here and probably later this week. So that's really all I have for my update.
Questions, Board?
I don't have any questions. I just want to, again, reiterate, thank you, Tyler. Thank you to your staff. It is imperative, you are imperative to, I mean, it's so important to the county for our secondary roads are, you know, that's one of the biggest funds that we, we have in our budgets, and it's so important for people to be able to access. And it is, it's one of those things that you, we probably don't give enough kudos to, and we want to say thank you. And Tyler, thank you, your willingness and, you know, your ability to lead. We appreciate that.
Thanks. And that's really why I wanted to bring these guys in today, because, you know, we are a big department. What we do affects a lot of things on a lot of people. And, you know, the goals, deadlines, and the pressure I put on these guys, you know, they came through for us, so.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Steve?
Well, I don't know, I, you know, I, Tyler, I've been in this business quite a while too, and I know what makes it work. What makes it work is everybody not, being able to express their opinions without worrying about getting trumped on, you know? And I appreciate that with you. I mean, when I was always there, it didn't bother me to have somebody come up and tell me what they thought, because I'd sure tell them back again what I thought. And it worked. And I appreciate that. And again, Tyler, you know, your leadership has been essential on this, and I think the guys respect you, so it works.
My apologies. I guess skip out to another meeting, but also just Tyler is going to be talking about a traffic safety improvement program, those red flashing lights, that's also going to be a big benefit for public safety, and he's going to talk a lot.
Appreciate it, Sheriff. Thank you. Very good. If there is something else, would entertain a motion to close discussion?
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right. Resolution 2021-64.
Yes, so this is a resolution to award a contract to an consulting firm, county members, associates for the feasibility study portion of the T-15 Flagler Bridge design. So we don't always do a feasibility study for bridge replacement. Typically, we don't. With a $3 million-plus bridge that we're looking at and plus the challenges with the side width, side roads, you know, the Horton, the Oracle Curve, the Herrera and the Creek, there are a lot of challenges there, and there are many different options. It is not a standard bridge. It will not be a standard bridge. There's no standard built fit. So we wanted to look at a variety of different options and kind of weigh cost benefit, maintenance, and long-term coordination with the railroad also comes into play here. So the design could be many things, and what this feasibility study will do will kind of narrow that down to a few options for us to consider. And, you know, there's some more curb changes I want to make to the north of the bridge, and then we always have to contend with the existing infrastructure. And then we always have to contend with the existing infrastructure, which is the side road into Flaglers and close proximity to the bridge. So, any changes we make there will impact that road as well. So, um, we, we did a, we sent out RFPs. We had seven, six of the seven consultants respond and submit a proposal. We had committee including Steve, Jay Davis, our assistant engineer, myself, review those and score them. Calvin Burns was the lowest scoring. And, and we do have, or have had a relationship with Calvin Burns in the past. They were our previous bridge inspectors for the county and also designed our most recent water bridge. It's gonna be the Swan Bridge, uh, which was in a one point five million dollar range. So, I recommend approval of the contract to Calvin Burns so we can proceed with the feasibility phase. Which, once we get to the results of that feasibility study, then, uh, those options will be presented to you as well with my recommendation.
Tyler, when is this bridge supposed to be, be done?
When?
Yeah.
Um, it's currently slated for FY twenty-three.
Okay.
So, over the next fourteen to eighteen months, we'll be in the design process. I wanna say we have a November twenty twenty-two letting scheduled at this time.
Okay.
I went with November in case we had any mishaps with the railroad. I'd like to do a winter letting, so if we get pushed to December, even to February, we'd still be okay. And it will be closed, um, at the time of construction. Uh, we considered stating it, there's just not any good options for that. But, uh, so I would say probably construction would be calendar year or point three.
Are we still looking at the, a realignment of the highway?
Clear on.
That's something that will be considered in the feasibility study. And it, when we say realignment, it would be mine or at this location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Steve, any questions?
I'm just asking.
No. Motion for approval?
Yeah, I move we approve.
I'll second. I don't know if we need to say the resolution.
I get, I mean, I'm shy, I guess.
Okay.
Motion to approve the resolution.
As opposed to another resolution, we have talked about.
Get on Steve, on his motions.
You know what I meant.
Let him repeat the motion, Steve.
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-four.
Thank you, sir.
I agree.
I'll second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good, thank you. Next, resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Tyler?
Yep, so, resolution number ten, I'm bringing that backwards here because we've been waiting on this agreement since February from the DOT, which will be here shortly. So, um, this is a, we have never done this. Richard Van Der Reer is our assigned technician. Him and I put this grant application together to apply for red flashing beacons to be installed at county to county paved road intersections. So, there are no state and county road intersections. Partly because we don't, I don't wanna maintain those stop signs. Those are the states at that, at those particular locations. So, we've looked at the, what county road intersections have, I mean, a couple criteria. We use tra, and we made this criteria up on our own, uh, traffic volume. We wanted a fifty-five mile an hour approach to the stop sign. And, you know, to get the, our biggest bang for our buck as far as the safety improvement and crash reduction. Flashing beacons, by multiple engineering studies, typically reduce crashes by about thirty percent at stop signs. So, we, uh, we went by the criteria metrics that we created, but also by complaints from residents about running stop signs, from law enforcement, uh, et cetera, and applied for these particular locations. There's eight in total. And this grant will fully fund the cost of the, the beacons and installation hardware for them. We currently have one, solar powered flashing red beacon. Uh, we have had next to no issues. I don't mind. Did you install it on, on your own side? Sure. So, I mean, we, we basically have had no issues as far as maintenance. Thankfully, no one has knocked it down. But, uh, we are proposing to go with that same brand and company that we currently have, which is what we applied for in the grant. This is funded from T SIP, which is the same funding source that we applied for the shoulder paving.
Yes.
I would say we're pretty fortunate to get this grant. This, this traffic control device section of T SIP has been greatly reduced this year. And actually, the grant that reached and I typically applied for for sign replacement, they did away with completely for this current fiscal year. So, um, and a lot of grants in the traffic control, uh, segment were denied. So, we feel really fortunate here and, um, I recommend approval of this agreement so that we can proceed with, uh, what is a reimbursement. So, we'll have the expense and get reimbursed through the grant organ.
Or any questions?
So, this would be eight additional, right Tyler? So, we'll have a total of nine then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, the five locations, but eight total beacons.
Does it take very long Tyler to get those?
I don't know.
Don't know, okay.
Not a year ago when we applied, but who knows now.
Okay. I think it's an excellent idea, looking at the locations.
Is there a motion on this resolution?
I make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one, which twenty-two.
Second?
McCollum?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-five. Missy?
This is Lloyd R. Becker subdivision. This, as I stated in the, the write-up, installs in a tract land where there's multiple splits. A portion of Flagler falls into this. That also makes it unique and we're not requiring a rezoning because a portion of this tract is also rezoned to R two floors, um, two families essential. So, a minor subdivision, just a two lot subdivision. The car, it was the consensus of both property owner and in Scott's review of the area that they're gonna share a driveway within the right way and then it'll split at the right way line. So, there's no requirement for any type of easement, um, the driveway, the hub and stuff. But they'll, they'll have a wide and right way within the right way. So, just for kind of the safety issue, it'll be directly, um, you know, it's a highly traveled road. There's no concerns from environmental health. There's currently a house on block two. Block one has more than adequate enough space to put in inside the septic. This is an area that is reclaimed ground, so it's not considered to be highly productive ag ground. Kind of scrub ground, yes, but definitely more worth than.
So, the access off of T fifteen is gonna be the current, the current access?
The, the most, so there's currently two accesses that Mr. Becker has and it's the most, the north access that they're gonna continue to use.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
All the paperwork's in place. Jake does all the paperwork. They, they aren't, um, proposing any restrictive covenants.
Pretty solid explanation. Thank you, missy. Uh, is there a motion on this resolution?
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-five.
I'll second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Thank you, missy.
Next we have resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen six. Jake?
So, this is a, a repeater, um, from your last meeting. I don't know if anybody from Knoxville is on or not, but in essence, you received the letter, um, asking for support of, from the city of Knoxville. This is similar to what you received from Melcher Dallas. I honestly don't remember if you've done it for Bussie or not. I can't remember if they've asked or not. But, um, they are asking that, uh, they have the opportunity to put their, um, imposition of local option sales tax on the ballot this fall in the November election, taking advantage of their originally scheduled, uh, city school elections. So, there would be no additional cost to them to do so. Their local option sales tax isn't, uh, um, their sunset date isn't until twenty twenty-three. But, um, taking advantage of this and next year there isn't a city school, um, can't do it on the primary. They would have to call a special or, or do it to their general and maybe that's not the best idea doing it during, during a general election. And then that puts you to the following year, which you don't want it to run out. There's a six-month window that being able to have an election for it or not. So, I think they're just looking ahead to try and get this on the ballot now. We talked about this earlier as well, that it takes a certain number of jurisdictions, over fifty percent, to, to get the board to call for an election. So, this is them asking you because you represent the incorporated area in this type of situation and that's a majority. I believe the city fellows already passed this or supported them as well. So, this will allow city of Knoxville to get their question on the ballot.
Very good. Thank you Jake. I don't have any questions. I think it's, um, find people on the ballot. Put a question to the voters, see if they want to continue.
Yeah, so the cities, each city that's done this, they, um, pass resolutions with the ballot language itself that they give to us. Couple of them have done that already. So, we just hold until we get that threshold and then that will cause the next step, rebel effects.
Right.
Jake, would it be safe to assume that all these requests from these cities and even ours coming up next would, were, were going to be eliminating these sunset clauses or part of the ballot?
The couple that we've seen now are eliminating sunsets. Uh, if you look around the state, that's very common anymore. Local option sales tax is a widely used and accepted form, um, of that type of process. So, yes, the towns that have submitted their language, um, have removed their sunsets. There really aren't very many around anymore. And it's a decision to make if what you wanna tell your voters or what you want. I mean.
Okay.
I mean, the voters still have the ability to remove it. They just have to go through a different process.
The, yes, um, the board, the board could rescind. That, that's, that's true.
That's, yeah.
And then, uh, you do, once you set language, this is a, this would be for Knoxville, but for anyone else, I know multiple counties around the state are having questions, uh, like this come up. Most of the questions that are gonna be on the ballot around the state, um, this fall are use changes. So, like you pick, if you get real specific on the ballot or something like that and then five years later another project comes up or something that you wanna use it for, you actually have to go, um, to the voters and have the use, the language changed on the ballot of how you can use. So, the ballot language is important because that is how you, I mean, it, it can be as specific as, um, for secondary road purposes only, to property tax, the, the property tax relief only, or one project. Or some just say anything deemed essential by the board supervisor.
Right. Very good, thank you. Any additional questions, discussion?
Nope, I think it's good that we've, uh, brought this, you know, we've been talking about this the last couple of meetings and, uh, if we approve, then let the voters be able to choose, so transparency is good.
Is there a motion on this resolution?
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-six.
I'll second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-seven is ours.
Yeah, so this is kind of a result of, uh, the discussions over the last meetings with the other cities. You know, bringing it back and severe opportunity for the board to discuss if you would want to bring a question, um, to the ballot. The county's sunset date is the twenty twenty-three date. So, I mean, there are some opportunities ahead. There would be nothing, uh, if this question would come to a ballot this fall in the city school election for the people in the incorporated area and it would fail. I mean, it does not rescind the current one you have until twenty twenty-three. There isn't a penalty from that standpoint. It's an opportunity to, um, place on the ballot without really much additional cost. Normally, the county wouldn't have any involvement, um, from ballots, um, in the city school election. We, uh, we do charge the jurisdictions for that. So, I would imagine that there would be a, a small percentage then that would come back to us because we've now put a question on the ballot. But in whole, it's not like having an entire special election just for us.
Right.
Um, if you, because enough jurisdictions have called for it, um, we, the county can place it on the ballot as well. If you would wanna wait and do it at a special election or something like that in the upcoming couple of years, you would need to receive support from other communities, up to fifty percent of jurisdiction to get it on the ballot. So, that's a risk too. May or may not be. I mean, that's, that's just.
Well, it seems to be a good time to at least begin that discussion Jake and
Right.
and, and how we would like to structure it.
Right.
Couple of things to think about if you look at section two of the resolution, uh, which is the core language of how the taxes are to be, uh, how sales tax will be distributed. It might be a time to think about the three items that are listed here. And whether or not we want it to be that restrictive. I, I think there is an argument to be made that sales taxes should be used for some property tax relief and have the language broadly stated in that way. Item D, uh, of that, section two does say that. But as far as preservation, capital equipment, uh, we've used other funds in addition to local option to be able to do those things. We use the sale of the county home, uh, to create a capital improvements fund. So, that's not even sales tax money that we used for them. And the projects intended to be larger than, uh, the sales taxes we collect. So, uh, so I think, I think there's at least an argument to be made that the money should be in the general fund for general obligations as deemed by the board. And maybe some property tax relief language in there as well. Some applicability there.
Yeah, I like the idea of it being a little less restrictive, but, uh, but I do agree that property tax should be included specifically on the language.
Yeah. That, that would be one that I would want specifically listed.
Yes, the language that's on this, um, resolution is, um, taken from the last ballot that we're currently under operating. So, um, you, you definitely would have the opportunity to, um, change that around. We do have, I don't know if this is something that you would wanna do today or there is still, your next meeting, um, is, does give you time to pass a resolution to place it on the ballot for this all year, so.
So, maybe what we can do Jake, I mean, and certainly have this discussion today if we want, um, or, or board members think about the language. My, I guess my suggestion would be at a minimum, you're really striking item C. And then determine the percentage for, for item D. And maybe there, maybe there's a line in there Jake for C that, you know, whatever percentage is property tax relief, then the other percentage goes into the general fund.
Yeah.
For as deemed by the, for as deemed by the board supervisors or something like that.
The property tax relief side is the cash, basically, that you guys have been placing into the general, or the general fund or the general supplemental fund, that type of thing. The other could be, um, projects, I think, I think we included, um, what may be Melcher. Melcher is like, Melcher's ballot is, I think it's zero. Of course, it's a smaller, they have a smaller situation on revenues. They have, um, projects, things like that. They, they put like any, any purpose for the portion that's not property tax relief.
What do, what do we generally collect? What's our general, what's our, our share of property tax?
Okay, uh, from the local option sales tax?
Yeah.
So, I did pull, um, just from like the last budgeting round and using the, um, permanent revenue projections. So, this is where we have the unique situation with the cities of Knoxville and Pella as well and the redistribution of some of the local option sales tax. So, this is based off projections and Tyler is really good in helping me out with this as well. Tyler's always helped them with the local option sales tax.
Well, let me stop you there for a second. With these things going back on the ballot, what about our distributions to Knoxville and Pella?
I believe that the agreement, um, I don't have it in front of me, would still be in place because it's in place through, um, through, through twenty twenty-three. It's an agreement that you could renegotiate or change, I guess, if you wanted to. And if one of the jurisdictions drops out, then there simply isn't any local option sales tax to redistribute. Either if we would drop, if the county would drop out, um, the, the mathematic, the mathematics would change because we're no longer a participant. So, the distribution is based on state formula.
Yeah, but essentially, at high level, the county is given a certain portion of their share of, of sales tax back to Knoxville and Pella.
Correct.
Okay.
Through twenty eighty.
So, probably a discussion we have to have to get this on the ballot is the, the tables have turned a little bit, right? In that we have these cities coming to the county asking for money. So, why would we give them money from local option sales tax? And then they come and ask for more money to support some of their infrastructure projects? It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, right? So maybe it's a good time to have discussion with Mike and with, with Heather to say, we probably, the county should probably get all of that money now for our projects, and because we're already giving you cash through bonding. Or we take those allocations and pay down the bonds. And specifically designate that that's what we're going to do with the, with those dollars, right? Potential option?
Could, it could be, yes. I mean, the twenty eighty is in effect, I believe, like through the end of, because the city of Bellas and Knoxville and the county kind of align, uh, that, that sunset and that time, through that time, I mean, you're.
So maybe, maybe Jake, what we can do is, because we've got our next meeting, it's probably up until our next meeting.
Well, I, I, I truly think the twenty eighty agreement is, is, uh, something you could definitely discuss in, in that distribution without having the ability to collect and use the local option sales tax to twenty eighty, but it essentially be void, wouldn't be even necessary. So I mean, I think you can decide to place this on the ballot, uh, to continue in twenty twenty-four and still work on.
Yeah, they're really two separate strings, but see, in my mind, they kind of work together. I, I agree, the, the ballot language, we could get on there if we make it general and more specific how we want to do that. But I do think we have to have that discussion because it is part and parcel of how we're going to use the funds, right?
Yeah.
And I think it's a good time to maybe have that conversation.
Yeah. So you asked, the original question was how much, um, does the county get? So this is based off formula, and it's based off, it's, the tax is collected everywhere in the county, um, and obviously it's mostly collected in the two bigger cities, right? Um, and then it's, but it's redistributed based off of like, uh, population and valuation of property within the areas. So each of the nine cities is an entity, and then the unincorporated area, uh, meaning the twelve townships are, are basically what comes to the county. So by population and valuation, the county, when I say the county, the unincorporated area is a large player there. So based off of the budget that we used last time, I think there, the, the collections that the county would receive would be about one point nine million. And then due to the, uh, redistribution, uh, to the city of Bellas, city of Knoxville through the twenty eighty that we've been doing for years and years, um, that brings it down to about one point three million because we just, we distribute that or pass that along to the cities for the, the projects that they're working on. So I think the question was, the total amount was about one point three, and we keep about one point three. And those are generalized, no.
Six hundred thousand, okay.
So the, the money comes in monthly, and then the treasurer's office, receipts in, um, apportioned us, and then redistributes to this, I think it's eight percent and four percent based off countywide collections.
So separate discussion, but I will fire up that discussion on twenty eighties with Heather and Mike.
So the money that goes to the cities, do they, do they specify where that has to go in this twenty eighty, or, or do they just put it in their general fund?
Uh, I believe, I'm, I'm not sure Steve, I don't, I don't remember. I mean, they can use it for however, however they feel necessary.
Okay.
I mean, it, it helps them with not having to borrow and with projects, and they can tell you how they use it.
But if you look at the history of lost, at least since I've been on the board, we have used it for, uh, we did the county park, and we did it faster than what the original project was, was supposed to be slated for, which we thought was an important project. I know Tyler has used lost money, um, and usually has a request for lost money pretty much every time.
Tyler's really good about putting his hand up for his money.
And our road, and, and for, for roads that's necessary. I mean, that's, we want to get ahead of our road projects and not stay, Tyler's always talked about staying even. Well, now we maybe have an opportunity to get a little bit ahead with road projects.
Pay down our law enforcement centers, that correct?
Yeah, so, uh, that's a good point, Keisha. Um, it wasn't on the ballot, but ever since this has come into effect, three hundred thousand dollars of this, um, it would be part C, I guess, in, in this, um, was, is used to pay, to apply toward the principal interest of the law enforcement center, which take, the annual payment is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and let's say, and three hundred of that comes from the local option, which is collected.
Right.
Um, so then the debt service to the, on the tax statements is only for a hundred and fifty thousand, let's say. So it drops that levy quite a bit, which is a form of property tax relief, it's just not part D, it's used as part C.
Sure, sure.
Which is limited how much you guys could use for projects.
But that extra six hundred thousand makes a difference then for that. If we want to apply it to general.
Yeah, the law enforcement center is due to be paid off in two years.
I think we're, I think we're looking at a, a neutral investment again in the LEC out there in the, in the air conditioning sys, or the systems out there too, so.
So at, at a minimum, let's, let's think about it like this. Let's, item C, we want to make that language more general, I think Jake.
Okay.
Item D, we want a certain percentage to be designated for property tax relief. What that percentage is, I think we all have to think about.
Okay.
Right?
If you guys want, you know, want drafts or whatever, or create, let me know and we can.
Yeah, I know, that's awesome.
That would be the deadline Jake.
Yeah, I think we need in the next couple of weeks to just do some modeling out of what that, of what that is. The corollary discussion on the twenty eighties, I'll do that. I'll take that on and talk to Mike and Heather, because an extra six hundred thousand is an extra six hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I believe, you know, that, that's gone, I think the board has approved that a couple of different times over the years. It's been in fact for many, for many, many years, and, um, some of the thought processes there is that, you know, that cities have to support the infrastructure to have these businesses that create the local option sales tax, right? So then that would be a rationale to kind of.
But I think, I think we've, I think we've changed that discussion. I mean, I think we've materially changed that discussion, especially with Knoxville and Bellas, now that we're bonding for major projects and acting as the bank.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think future boards could probably revisit the twenty eighty with these tax dollars once that bond is paid off in both those cities. I mean.
I think it's a, it's a fair, it's a fair conversation to say, we would like to be able to apply those dollars to those bonding, bonded projects, freeing up more capacity to do more projects, right?
That's fair, I think that's, that's fair.
High level, I'd like to express my support of reviewing local option sales tax without sunset, I would agree. Uh, and more specifically, we've used a little bit for equipment, but largely it's been road and green projects. And to somebody's point earlier, specifically, we've been intentional about using local option sales tax on local roads adjacent to or contiguous with incorporated areas. Sixtieth and Shaw in Melcher is a good example of a local road abandoned and collected for years due to a lack of funding. We're able to use local options, option sales tax adjacent to an incorporated area and rehab and make that road.
Which is ad been to the city of Melcher, or to the, to the adjoining cities.
Yeah, and then our, and definitely in our unincorporated cities, we've used these funds largely. We have not ever used it on a cap bump in our project, although that is an option. Uh, so, I guess I'd just like to express our support, specifically to C three, some type of language being retained unless you make it broad enough to encompass that in the future resolution.
So let's do some modeling Jake on percentages and as far as the property tax relief portion of it, and then, uh, maybe some draft language can flow back and forth over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll note it for sure, um, to make a, um, agenda item for, uh, August tenth is the next meeting. I believe that's the deadline to.
Okay.
To get it into my office for inclusion on the ballot.
Very good. So board be thinking about that for the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, and I think ballot is, is not going to, um, place this on the ballot for this fall, and we're looking at a different option in the future, so.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion on this? All right. Would entertain a motion to close discussion.
Motion to close discussion.
Second. McCollum's?
Aye.
Ramy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, VA demolition update, uh, had a chance to visit.
Uh, do we have to approve this?
No.
We're just, we just closed the discussion. We won't time cut it in August tenth.
He's gonna, because we don't want to prove that language.
Yeah. You guys have the opportunity to create whatever language you want.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, had a chance to visit the site yesterday with Chris and representatives of Fight. Shannon was great, uh, in taking us around, extremely professional, uh, very encouraged about our selection of that contractor, the take on this work. Uh, the education building is down. Other buildings are, are slated to begin deconstruction, demolition, shortly more equipment's coming in. So, uh, the folks are doing just a great job out there in managing that site. We are going to put up some more notices at all the gates, so we want to really encourage the public that is a construction zone. It is not accessible to the public without express permission of the contractor. So the liability issues are going to be mounting, uh, pretty much as more equipment, et cetera, is out there. So we're gonna put it, we'll be posting that at all the gate entrances. So for the residents, you can sure walk on the outside of the fence and, and see what's going on, but do not go inside, uh, without the express permission of the contractor. But, uh, but yeah, progress is being made, very excited. I think they'll be ahead of schedule, um, that's what Shannon seemed to indicate. And we'll be taking a group out on Thursday, uh, city representatives, I think Mayor Hatch, uh, Doug Morris, county member of the council, and I think Bob Leonard from KNI will be going with us. So, uh, we'll go out there and tour it as well, and, and have Knoxville take a look and see what's going on. So, uh, it, it has been, was more than begun.
I think it's unfortunate. I think we've incurred some vandalism on the, uh, the laundry, you know? It sat there for a long time and wasn't damaged, but I think, I think they've taken a shot at it, somebody has.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions on that guys? I know you'll be going out here in the next few days to see it as well, so.
Yeah, I look forward to, to doing it personally.
All right, any, uh, anything else we need to talk about?
I don't have anything.
Nope, I have nothing earth shattering.
Nothing earth shattering, all right. Very good with that. entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. McCollum's?
Aye.
Ramy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.